I'm Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm calling this meeting on December 22, 2020, to order at 7:03 PM. I will start by taking a roll, and then we might have to add a few Planning Board members shortly. Just let me know that you're here, Mr. Seau.
Yes.
Ms. Orvadall?
Yes.
And Ms. Miller?
Present.
Let's just make sure, Mr. Flint or Mr. Bazdet, did you guys join yet? All right, so we'll keep an eye for them. So on the agenda for tonight are a few items, several of which we need a quorum for. The first item scheduled is for a public hearing, but the applicant has asked for a continuance without discussion. So when we have a quorum, we will take a motion to continue that without discussion, that item. And the rest of the items are the administrative business. So we've got, first and foremost, the board needs to review the draft decision for the definitive subdivision plan. But we also have on the line Gary Kleiman, who's going to give us an update about the NMI StarMet reuse planning committee. And then we're going to follow up. We had a joint meeting with the ZBA and the Planning Board last week that was very fruitful, and we want to kind of fill in the other members on that discussion and, you know, fill in the public as well. But we can start with some review of the minutes of November 10th, November 24th, and December 8th, to see if we have any changes. Do we, we don't need a quorum for that, or there's four of us, so we have it? Good enough, okay. So there's enough people for us to do the minutes. So starting with the minutes of December 8th. No, starting with the minutes from November 10th. Does anybody have any suggested edits, changes, or any comments about those? Okay, Linda, we're counting on you with your eye for detail.
I'm okay with this one.
Okay. All right, can I just do all three, and then we'll do one motion to accept all of them? Or do you want me to do them one at a time?
Nope, you can, you can do them all one at a time, so long as it's either as written or with whatever amendments may be needed.
Okay. So then the other ones were the meeting on the 24th? November 24th? I did not see any, any changes. If there are no other suggestions, then move on to December 8th. I think those just came out today or yesterday. I have to look, yesterday probably. Yeah, those were out today. So questions on the, or comments on the minutes for December 8th, 2020? That was when we did the tree preservation bylaw. We did, had the MAPC presentation, and we also had the final part of the public hearing for the subdivision. We're going to review the decision of tonight. All right. Hearing, no suggestions from the members that are on the line, and I see Nathan has joined us as well.
I apologize, guys, I had something come up. Had to attend to and ran in here.
We're glad you're here. We were just kind of going over the minutes. Did you have any suggestions or notice any changes needed into the three sets of minutes that we're going over tonight?
I did not.
Okay, so then I would take a motion to approve the minutes as written. You could do all three of those. Nathan, it looked like you were raising your hand to make a motion.
All right, I guess I'll, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of, have them in front of me, I know December 8th was on one of them.
December 8th, November 10th, and then November 24th.
November 10th, November 24th, and December 8th as written. And I assume nobody had the edits, is that right?
Correct. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Let's see.
Burton will be on in a second.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Seau?
Yes.
Mr. Bazdet?
Yes.
Ms. Orvadall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And Ms. Ferguson, yes. So minutes concluded. That leaves kind of a number of other things. So we can, depending on when, when he's going to join, we could hear from Gary first, and then...
So there are, there are five of you, and since you are only, for the first item, you're continuing without discussion.
Oh, that's right, okay, let's do that. So recall that our seven o'clock item needs to be, that was requested to be continued. I would entertain a motion from someone on the board to continue the public hearing to January 12th, 2021, at 7:30. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Wait, sorry.
Linda's going to make a motion to continue our item.
I make a motion that the public hearing, do I need to specify the name of the applicant? The review of the definitive subdivision plan, application of Quarry Road, Quarry North Road LLC, to create a one-lot subdivision with access from the town of Subbury for the conquered portion of the tract at 48 wide Fitchburg Turnpike parcel 3419, be continued until seven o'clock?
I think it's 7:30 on the 12th.
Seven, sorry, 7:30 on January 12th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nathan seconds, Mr. Seau?
Yes.
Mr. Bazdet?
Yes.
Ms. Orvadall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And Ms. Ferguson, yes. All right, so we will look forward to continuing that in January, in the new year. So Elizabeth, is your suggestion to continue with the deliberation or wait, or do something else, and then come back to that once we know Burton is on the line?
I would wait, oh, he's there.
Perfect. Good timing. All right, so we've got Mr. Flint and Mr. Bazdet, who have joined us. I did forget to mention that this meeting is being recorded, and that when we have public participation, we will ask for that, and you'll be able to raise your hand in public comment time, and we will call on you, and you'll be able to, we'll be able to hear you or hear and see you, and you'll state your name and address for the record. For the item that we're going to start with, which is the deliberation about the draft decision for the subdivision on Main Street, we've closed the public hearing on that, and so we won't be taking any more public comment. The board is just going to review what we have, what the decision that Elizabeth has drafted for us, will make any comments and changes, and then we'll take a vote on it tonight. I would like to acknowledge that I have received the confirmation of evidential reviews from both Linda and Alan. Thank you both for taking the time to watch the recordings of the meeting so that you can make an informed vote. I do, I do think it's interesting that, you know, now that I look at the makeup of this board, because when the applicant came before us for the PRD, we did a site visit, which was several years ago, and there's probably, you know, Linda, and I don't even think Haley did that site visit, did that walkthrough. So you guys didn't actually, you weren't actually at the site that we've been discussing so much, you know, to see our concerns. So just kind of interesting that, you know, you might still have perceptions based on the evidence that we've had so far, even without having seen the site. But our discussion tonight is going to be about Elizabeth's decision, or that she's drafted for us, that will represent our decision. And I will, you know, remind all of those listening that we try to weigh the interests of the applicant and the community and evaluate the evidence that we have before us from the town departments and committees. And we do really appreciate the work that all the town departments have done to, you know, accurately review and present to us their findings. And so we will do our best to make sure to capture our finding and our decision accurately, including all of the conditions. So what I'd like to do is make sure that all of the board members have an opportunity to give feedback on the decision. So if you've seen something that you'd like to change the wording of, we can do that. And Elizabeth, it might help if you're able to share your screen, and we can look at where people are suggesting changes. And then at the end, we'll take a vote. But are there any questions or comments from the board? And before we kind of start reviewing that. And then Elizabeth, we'll make sure that, you know, you have kind of that final look to make sure we haven't omitted any conditions, or just make sure we've really captured everything that we intended to. We appreciate that. All right, so if you'll put that up. I know I had some questions, but I, or comments and suggested changes, but I'd like to hear from other board members first, if that's okay. So if you have like a page number you want Elizabeth to show us, we're happy to look at it that way.
So hang on, one. You can see where I have the document really big, because I don't want to wear my glasses. So can everybody see that now? Is that, does that work? Okay.
Yep, we can see your screen.
Okay. So it may be simplest to just go through this with the board, page by page. And if anybody has any comments, questions, clarifications, or edits, that we can just go through it page by page. I can also explain there were different sections that had highlighting in them, and while they may be obvious, I can explain what the highlighting is.
Okay.
The first part of the decision is always the legal parts about the public notice, the public hearings, the different meeting dates. And then it goes through, and a description of the site. So if anybody had any comments on page one? Okay. Page two deals with, again, the rest of the project description, and then goes through the zoning bylaw, compliance items.
Actually, sorry, Elizabeth, I don't know if this is, I mean, tell me what you think, but I just, in reading the project description or site information, I, I would just, I think it might be useful to, unless it's, I'm just missing it, like saying here, like the lot is, or the parcels are, the parcel, however many there are, you know, basically fully wooded.
Okay. So something more than the site is generally wooded, becoming denser towards the rear?
Oh, sorry, it's down there. I was looking for it up top. We're good.
Kristin, do you, do you want edits that are grammatical or spelling?
Yeah, let's, let's take care of that all while we're on that page, if that's okay. I mean, Elizabeth, if that's right, unless you'd, I mean, because that way we have them all.
That's fine.
I don't have any on, I'm further down on, I guess it's page, I have it as page two. So not, nothing on page one, but on page two, it says, the last paragraph before section two, to the southwest and east. I think it should be "are" rather than "is" existing residential properties.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Page three just goes through the conditions for the preliminary plan decision and how those were satisfied. Any edits or comments on page three?
Nope.
No? Okay. Page four continues the conditions for the preliminary plan and how they were satisfied. Any comments, questions, edits for page four? No? Okay. Again, page five, continuing with the preliminary plan conditions. Any edits, comments on page five?
None for me.
Page six. And then on page seven starts the review under the subdivision rules and regs, section 5.4, the site evaluation. Any edits, Linda? I know you had some, but I don't remember exactly where they were.
Yeah.
Okay. Page eight, continuing on the site evaluation.
Just on eight, under section E, the first line, the "I" in isolated should be small, a small "I."
Page eight continues the site evaluation. That's page nine, sorry.
So on page nine, the current, the section H, the direct current town costs, I had a question about whether that includes costs of the conquered public schools and the conquered portion of the regional school district?
So that's, this information was provided by the applicant, and I was not able to get clarification from the finance department.
Okay.
Should, should we, should we note that? You know, here's the projection, and then just exactly what you said. This application, this information was provided by the applicant and has not been directly, the finance committee has not commented on it.
Well, I, so the town's budget and purchasing director did provide the estimate for the annual cost of town services. But I wasn't able to confirm whether that town services would include any of the public school or regional high school portion. So whether it's important in this decision, you do have town council is also available, and whether it's important for this decision, we can always add it, you know, that it's, it's not known whether...
I mean, I just want to make sure the decision is as accurate as possible. So if it helps to just state that in there, maybe we should. Even though, like you're saying, I think it is probably a relatively low importance compared to other items.
Sufficient?
Thank you. Linda, is that, does that align with what I'm thinking? Okay. All right.
So finishing up on page 10, anything else, Linda? Members of the board?
Can you scroll up just a little bit? I'm just about the... Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's disappointing that, you know, in order to have the right site distance, it seems like more trees need to be removed, you know, that kind of thing, so. But I didn't see any wording that would need to be changed.
Okay. Page 11 finishes up the site evaluation, and then also begins the section 5.5, action by the board.
I'm not sure, Elizabeth, that, I realize it's the wording of the provision, but the statement in five, and let's see, 5.5B, accordingly, the board finds that this development would not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, and convenience of future residents or others, or environmental degradation. I guess I'd want to know whether the board members agree with that statement and whether they think it's warranted to put in the decision. And with a caveat, by the way, from, from 5.5B, that it could be avoided or ameliorated through an alternative plan.
Can you highlight that, Elizabeth? Just where he's reading that, just struggling to see it. Oh, up there, okay. Because I do think that it's stated in the report, you know, that we have determined that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't entail unwarranted safety. Like, I think it actually says that that was our determined, our decision, our determination, and I think that would be... Yeah, I think the way that it was stated elsewhere also was disconcerting.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't agree that, I don't even know that we've talked about that necessarily.
Yeah, Haley, I think we've discussed whether the land is suitable or unsuitable for development, what the standard there would be, what suitability means. And I appreciate that this, this particular finding may not be, is driven by our regulations and not necessarily the subdivision control law. But I don't think that we, as a board, have agreed or have had a finding that the development would not entail unwarranted hazard to health, safety, or convenience, which could be avoided or ameliorated through an alternative plan. I am fine with the rest of the paragraph that the town, you know, town staff, Board of Health and Natural Resources Commission, Fire Department, CMLP, et cetera, have reviewed for issues of flooding and proper drainage, and that there are not issues that have not been addressed in this report. But I don't think the board has made that finding.
That's, yeah, I think that was a sticking point for me, too.
Agree. But you're talking about the last sentence?
Just the last sentence.
Yes.
Yeah. I think in part, that sentence relates back to the whole conversation we had around due regard and, and sort of whether or not that would hold up and be a, you know, a strong enough sticking point to, to, you know, be a showstopper for this application. And, you know, the guidance that we've gotten from town council seems to indicate that, no, it would not. But I agree that, I don't think we came to the conclusion that, you know, that it would not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, and convenience for future residents or others of, or of environmental degradation.
So is it, you would like just to delete this sentence? I know David's on, if he has any comments?
Hi, everyone, this is David Lyons, town council. The, I know people have different views, mixed feelings about the facts here, and, but as a legal matter, this is the finding that's called for by the regulations for an approval. So if the, if the board is going to approve the application, then this language is important to include, because that's, it's one of the factors. Doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, everyone agrees that it's the most environmentally friendly or that there's no harm environmental degradation, degradation, but it's, that you find that it's not unwarranted in this context. So I, from a legal perspective, I would rather have that language in the decision.
So maybe a qualifier could be added. Thank you, David, for that input. A qualifier could be added at the end of the sentence. I, perhaps it could read that the board finds this development would not entail, you know, the quoted language, future residents, to the degree that the board is, would find it permissible to not grant the development. Or we can wordsmith that, but to the degree that the board would find it within its authority to deny the applica, the application. Because I think we all find it, we have all raised concerns around safety, health, convenience, environmental degradation. And we have, we know we've considered an alternative plan. So I just want to make sure that the language of the regulation doesn't put words in our mouth in our deliberation. So perhaps we can say that caveat, Elizabeth, that we find that this development would not entail... ...dot, dot, dot, to the degree that the board can find justification to deny the application. I throw that out for consideration.
So, and I, I think that's, certainly would make us more comfortable. I'm just thinking about the process and what we're, what we're aiming to do in order for us to approve or even vote on this plan. You know, the criteria that we have to evaluate are these five options right here, three of which are on the, on the screen in front of us. I'm just going to talk through this. So, you know, if it's complete and technically accurate, you know, if we've made this, you know, determination that it does not entail unwarranted hazard, et cetera, if it conforms to the design and construction standards, and then if it conforms with zoning requirements, and then it's consistent with subdivision control law. So my understanding is if, you know, if the project meets all five of those conditions, then we could vote to, to approve it. If it doesn't meet all five of those, we would state it here that, no, it doesn't meet one of these conditions. And then when we vote on it, I'm just trying to think about, you know, are we voting to approve a project? Are we, are we voting? You know, it's, are we voting to support the language that we have in here for these five criteria? Am I making it harder than it needs to be?
So... David, let me is it sufficient to say to? Is that sufficient?
Board finds that consistent with recommendations from town staff, this decision includes conditions that would limit harm to the safety, health and general welfare of present and future residents of the subdivision and neighboring areas.
Because it, there's, you know, there's over 50 conditions that are designed to deal with drainage, utilities, traffic, health and convenience, all of those items. And it's only through all of those conditions that all of those items get addressed.
Elizabeth, I think that's a good wording that we're finding that there's that those things have been limited.
I think.
Yeah, David, if you think that's acceptable, I would agree.
I think it's efficient.
Other other suggestions, questions from the from the board?
Just a question on what you just said, Kristen, just trying to understand how these the five items here that you stepped through that said that we're going to step through. Like, how does what's below like six, two, one? Is that supposed to fit somewhere in these five or?
That I believe that should fit in like the fifth one with the subdivision. You know, so saying as detailed in this decision and subject to the conditions of approval, the board finds that the definitive subdivision plan is consistent with the purposes of subdivision control laws. Well, that's the purpose. That's a good question, Elizabeth.
So I think the I think the problem is, is is how the current zoning bylaw is written and where design standards are coming after section 5.5. So while these are in numerical order, that may be the issue, but I agree that item E is to encompass the rest of the subdivision rules and regs and the design standards. So you know, sequentially, logically, if it makes more sense, you know, this section 5.5 can be moved, you know, after section six in the decision. But yes, I agree that E is supposed to take into consideration the remainder of this decision.
If I could add, I think that the these five subparts of 5.5 are are all reflected in section six and its various subparts. So for example, six, 5.5C, those those design and construction standards are elaborated upon in section 6.1 and et cetera. Same with six point, same with 5.5B, 5.5D conformity with zoning requirements, you'd look more to the zoning bylaw. And elsewhere, I think above in the decision, it refers to the zoning requirements. So I think six, section six really elaborates upon the standards here in 5.5.
So Haley, if I'm understanding kind of your your concern, are you trying to understand where we would note? You know, the concerns that we had, which we do below relative to our our actual decision?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, because nothing up, nothing in sort of one A through E, right? Talk about trees and the fact that like the, you know, it's the parcel is clear, is going to be clear cut.
Right. And that we and that by, you know, we're condoning this by, you know, approving this project type thing. Or that, you know, that the doing so, as we've said, is not going to be harmful. But we do say that we're, you know, I think that has to do with the conditions and the input from the town staff to a degree. Can we, would you mind if we moved on a little bit and then kind of come back to the overall decision? I they're really good points. I want to make sure we kind of see everything, see the big picture and then come back, think more specifically about, you know, the criteria for our decision and what we're going to, what we're going to vote on. If there are no objections, let's let's move on also because I know I had some comments starting on page 12. Did anyone else on page 12? I the I had a comment on the paragraph that's the sentence that says, if the applicant intends to grade for the roadway utilities storm water drainage, that one. I would like to propose changing that to the applicant was reminded at the December 8, 2020 meeting that if they intended to grade for the roadway utilities storm water drainage and the lots at the same time, an application under the tree preservation by law is required prior to commencement. I just wanted to kind of make that language stronger so that nobody would accidentally do anything and claim they.
Can you repeat it one more time?
Yep. The applicant was reminded at the December 8, 2020 meeting that if they intend to grade and then the rest of it, I think should be okay.
I had a comment and a question on the first sentence in the first paragraph whenever we're ready. Um, I just thought it would be useful, maybe I had to read this a few times to make sure I understood it. But so we're saying the applicant's plans didn't show any large trees. But there are, we are saying there are, there are many as fitting in this definition that I guess I don't know the answer to that. But the way this reads anyways is that we we are saying there are many trees with a diameter height of six inches on the site, but the applicant's plans are not showing any, is that, I mean, should they have been was is my question, but then also it might be more clear to write it in a the sort of the reverse order maybe of like that we town planner notes that the site has, you know, many large trees on site. But, you know, the the applicants plans do not show any. So I just found that after that sunk in, I yeah, then I had the question, well, why weren't they showing any if they're if they are there and how, you know, did we quantify them at all?
Or maybe just saying the plans do not show retaining any large trees. Yeah.
The applicant's plans.
It, yeah, it might be. I think those are the only plans that are referred to, I think.
Yeah, probably right. I just if you're not reading it from start to finish and just jump around, I found myself getting, you know, a little bit confused, but that that's probably right.
And yeah, I would move the which the plans do not show to after the site contains the presence of many large trees that under the tree protection by law are trees with a diameter of rest of six inches. And and are not shown on the applicant's plans. And that's that's correct, right? They were, those plans were never updated to show the trees. It was kind of like they said, you know, well, when we need to do the tree preservation by law for the lots, that's when we'll do those markings. Like, we didn't ask, they weren't required to share the trees for any plant.
That better, Haley?
Yeah, that's great. Um, is it worth then adding after that sentence, the applicant's plan is to, you know, remove all large trees for the construction of the road or however, whatever the right phrasing is? I mean, I kind of defer to you guys on this, like I I disagree with this. I don't agree with this in the first place, so. Um, you know, I don't think they have given due regard. So, you know, I guess take what I my comment with a grain of salt in that sense.
So there, there, there is not a a standard subdivision anywhere where every single tree and bush is removed to construct the road. It it has to be to construct the road. So I I think it's challenging for the board to to divide the difference between, you know, there's the road and then there's the whole entire site for the lots as well. And and that's where, you know, the tree protection by law and the condition in place deals with the lots and and not with the subdivision road because you can't build a road with a tree in the middle. So it there it.
But they can be on the sides of the road.
Well, no, because you have to put in utilities. So you know, there, there's, there's very few subdivisions where if there's an existing tree where the road or the utilities have to be installed, there is no ability to to save a tree. So I think that's what's challenging is that, you know, this is being developed and shown as the road and the lots all at the same time.
Can we clean up that sentence that you just did and say many large trees that under the tree protection by law are trees with a diameter? Or many large trees are present. So get rid of the first, the site contains the presence of.
Well, I guess I'm confused. Like, why would the subdivision law even in the first place say in laying out a subdivision, the subdivision shall give due regard for all natural features such as large trees? If it's why they acknowledge that that's impossible.
Well, so you could have in in some of the older subdivision, you can have a much you could have a much larger parcel where you have the ability to move the road right of way. You know, one where the other and have, you know, a large tree on a lot instead of within where the road is going to be constructed. It becomes much more difficult when you get down to residency zone district where there's it's only 10,000 square foot lot requirements, but still have a 50 foot wide road of road right of way. 26 feet of pavement unless the board waves the pavement width. So
Okay, that's helpful. So it sounds like it's a combination of the the design, the proposed design, you know, and the and the number of lots that, you know, are being proposed. So.
And and the size of the site, whether it allows for a road right of way to be shifted one direction or the other.
Okay.
No, you so.
Yeah, if you got rid of that part that, you know, many large trees are present that under the tree protection by law, trees of time, you know, so forth and so on. And then I would put after the six inches, oh, yeah, and and are not shown on the plans. That's fine. If that's okay. And so, you know, just making sure that we're capturing, you know, our concerns and and our our findings here about protection of natural features. And and so obviously, the last, the last sentence there is the board find further finds that the that conditional on the applicant's compliance with the tree preservation by law, the applicant will have given due regard to the natural features of the site. And so, and so we've said the board finds right before that identified regulatory water courses scenic or historic spots, butts, aquifers, floodplains and habitats of rare and endangered species are not present at the site. And I think that was based on, you know, information from the town departments and we don't have evidence otherwise. So we could say that. And then again, it's, you know, conditional on the applicant's compliance with the tree preservation by law. That that's really kind of, I believe, the only, you know, due regard that they're giving for the natural features is they are preserving some of the trees when they grade the lots. I don't, I don't recall. I believe that was the response when asked, you know, what they're doing to preserve natural features, protect them. Does anybody recall anything different? Okay, so then I I I think that's the only thing they're doing. And so we, if by stating this, we're saying, you know, that that does count as due regard for the protection of the natural features and therefore that's that's our finding for 6.2.1. Would anyone like to make any changes or other comments about this? I mean, I.
I think the finding is that we refine is that it's not practical to leave the natural features undisturbed in it and otherwise meet the requirements of the subdivision our regulations and the subdivision control law. I think we're in.
Given, given, I would, I mean, I would just say it might be worth adding the sentence like, given the extent of the the maximization of the development under the developer's plan out, something along those lines. Because again, like it's we're, they're running into, I think, we're worrying these issues because of the extent to which they want to develop the property.
Because I, Kristen, I get that the the scope of the finding we need to find, we need to attest to. But I don't think anybody on the board feels that much regard was given to the natural features of the property with the exception of the the wetland along the back of the property. I I think that our authority as the board is somewhat limited with regards to how much the protection of natural features can can determine our decision under the subdivision control law. And I'm looking at this sentence, it says, these features shall be left undisturbed wherever practical, 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 excuse me. And I think what we found is that based upon the subdivision plan that otherwise meets the requirements for laying out roadways in the town of Concord and the like, that it's not practical to preserve the existing natural features, except to the extent shown on their plans.
And so it's hard because I want to say the board acknowledges that, you know, based on the applicant's plan, you know, that it's not practical to do that. But I feel like we have to have these findings in order to, you know, make a decision. Even though, so I mean, I think we're struggling with the fact that we don't necessarily agree that that's what we found, but in order to, you know, make our decision, we have to find them, find this way. I'm having trouble kind of resolving that. But it's almost like they've met it enough.
The, I mean, I think this is a situation where we've had input from both the applicant's council and our town council as to what what it means to give due regard, right? And I don't think as a board, as a board member, I'm comfortable saying that we could deny the the application based upon this provision of our subdivision rules and regulations. And I would agree with the app. And I would agree with the applicant that to be able to meet the grade and road, road layout requirements i- in our subdivision control laws. They essentially have to completely modify the topography, which obviously prevents the preservation of trees. I am fine with a statement that says that. The board finds that it is not practical in this instance to otherwise meet the requirements of the subdivision control law and preserve the natural features of. Of the, the existing natural features of the property. And, and for those reasons, we feel this, this provision has been met.
I. I would like that. Can you try that one more time so that Elizabeth can capture that?
Okay. The, it's, the, the board finds that, given the. Requirements for the layout of. Streets and utilities and the sub, as required by the town subdivision. Regulations, it is not practical, practical. To significantly preserve or significantly leave undisturbed. Natural features on the property beyond the extent shown on the applicant's plans.
Shouldn't we say here something like because of the choice of the design and. As he has said, the maximization of the development. I mean, that's, that's one of the factors, that's why it's not practical.
I think that that would be a, a welcome addition to my words. I think that's what Haley was suggesting.
And however. The. The concept of maximizing development is one of subjectiveness. This is a subdivision plan that. Has a roadway right of way that meets the requirements, the lots are 10,000 square feet. Um, which is the requirement in the residency zone district. Some of the lots are larger because of the wetland and the zoning by law requires 50% of the lot be upland, so. It, it's not that it's maximizing, it's, it's meeting the requirements of the subdivision rules and regs in the zoning in the residency zone district. Um, is it? Many people's thoughts that would have, it had been nicer to have. Fewer lots and bigger lots and allow more trees. Um, yes, but I, I don't think it's an adequate statement that. The project is maximizing. Um, it, it's meeting the requirements of zoning and sub, the subdivision rules and regs.
And maybe it's the choice of the design made, the design decisions because of the design is, I mean, this could have been designed with a different road. Uh, I mean. The, there has been, it's, I mean, the applicant is doing enough engineering that they can do anything with the road, so they could have done much. I mean, that's not a subjective way of thinking about it. Basically, uh, uh, what I'm saying is one of, one of the main factors of what we're discussing is not in this sentence. And that's, that's what Haley pointed out, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not a. And probably Burton can craft the words much better than, than I do, but. So, but as a concept, I think there's something missing here. I'm not the, I can't craft the words correctly. I don't know, Haley, maybe if you.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, like to me. Like planning board, some of the stuff is subjective, like what is it, what is a similar, like similar community asset, like there's plenty of subjective things in here in my mind that. You know, the planning board is subjective in some ways, but. So, I mean, if, if it's like technically incorrect to, to state, say that, though, I, we can leave it out, but I. I think at the end of the day, I'm on the same page with Alan that, like, they, the developer could have chosen to do fewer lots. And I would argue like that would create more, um, what's the phrase in here? You know, add attractiveness and value to the subdivision. And that's a subjective opinion.
Well, you're saying within the latitude of what the board is weighing in on. You know, like when you say subjectivity means it, it's what the, the board is kind of being asked to.
Yeah.
You know, state their opinion on based on that, that, you know, the evidence that we have and, and the latitude given to us by the language and the. And the rules and reg. Um, okay, so how, what we have in there now is the board finds. The board finds that given the requirements for the layout of streets and utilities as required in the subdivision rules and regulations. It is not practical to significantly leave undisturbed the natural features of the site. The board further finds that conditional on the applicant's compliance with the tree preservation by law, the applicant will have given. Due regard to the natural features of the site. Um, and I, I guess. You know, perhaps we need to leave that in here and then. When we take our vote, if we don't agree with that, like it's, it's so hard to say, like, if we don't agree with that. Then, then that comes out at the time of the vote, um, or it seems like. If we don't agree with that, we, we draft differently, um, you know, going to, you know, section 5.5. And where, where we have a choice to. Um, approve, modify and approve or disapprove the plan, and so our decision is just kind of reflecting. That we would approve, you know, at least with conditions. And then here's the information, and then if we get to the vote. And, you know, each person who votes gets to make a decision on whether they agree with. Um, you know, what we have drafted here, I, I think that's the best we can do. So other, other comments about this, can people live with the language that there is now and we'll, we'll continue on and see how it all shapes up?
Yes.
I mean, they're all good points and they're really trying to capture the discussion that we had accurately. Um, so that we're not missing any of that in, in our decision. Um, I had a comment on page 13. Does anybody else had a comment on page 11 or 12? Right. Are you? Are you on page 13?
Yes.
Okay. My comment. Was, um, after the sentence that says town staff has noted and the applicant has acknowledged that an earth removal permit from the ZBA is required. Or can we add something to the effect that? After that sentence, we can say the acknowledgement that the plan meets the rules and regulations of the subdivision. Control law is not intended to convey that the planning board endorses earth removal to make the site suitable. And David may have to weigh in on that.
Um, but before David weighs in, um, I did want to note that this. Um, specific condition. Um, needs to be incorporated into the, the final list at the end.
Okay, thank you.
But I will, I will leave it to David to. Give counsel to the board.
So David, could, could I add something here? Because what I'm concerned about is. We seem to be getting our as stated findings. Um, used against us without the intent of what we're saying. So for example, well, the planning board approved, you know, approved the, this, therefore you have to approve that. And so just because i- i- if this is approved, the subdivision. It, it means that we approved for the, you know, the laying of the roadways and so forth and so on. Um, it has less to do with, you know, the earth removal because as we were told, we can't weigh in on that. So just, I want to make sure that, is it possible to, you know, state that in here so that if the ZBA refers to this decision. They get the accurate picture of, you know, that just because of our decision on one aspect does not mean that we. Would recommend the removal of it to make the site suitable.
Um, I think you can make a statement to that effect. I would suggest something along the lines of the, uh, planning board expresses no opinion about whether the. The applicant can. The zoning board of appeals can make the appropriate findings to. Grant an earth removal permit. Does that get it what you're?
Well, it, it sounds a little, um, it sounds a little weaker than what I would. Say we have talked about, but I mean, it might be more. It might be more legally representative.
Well, Kristen, we haven't specifically gone through, because it's not within our purview. The requirements of that, of the earth removal permit process. So, well, I think many of us have raised concerns about earth removal generally. But I think with, with respect to the issuance of an earth removal permit. A statement that the, the approval of, the approval of the subdivision plan. In, in granting approval of a subdivision plan, we, we don't make any findings on. The, the suitability of granting a earth removal permit, I think is, is pretty accurate.
Let's see what Elizabeth.
Sufficient? Or accurate, David?
My, my concern is that, that the applicant goes to the ZBA and says, look, we, the planning board approved this. So why would they approve this if the site wasn't suitable? They knew how much earth we were going to remove. That's, I, I want to make sure that it is not used, um, out of, out of context. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Um, well, for one thing, I think you, the planning board could comment to the ZBA at the appropriate time. Could send a letter.
Okay, alright, so then, then it's less, less critical that that be captured and, and obviously that'd probably be. More appropriate than having the ZBA dig through, you know. Multi-page report here, so.
Just before we move off from that, what would, what would such a, a letter or. Or comment from the board to the ZBA look like?
Um, it would look no different than any other recommendation. From the planning board to the board of appeals.
So the, the ZBA might ask us for, you know, our recommendation and we may have put together, you know, like a memo recommendation, probably with a specific. Uh, point that we were just, that discussed or learned during our, our process.
Um, I would imagine that the zoning board of appeals would ask for. Um, input from the planning board as well as the public works commission. Given the, the level of truck traffic on Main Street.
Um, so I mean, I guess I can, I, I don't know that what we've got there adds anything necessarily, so. You, you can leave it or, you know, I don't know if other, other board members feel strongly, I mean, I, I think you're saying that. Where, where any important information might be related if we're asked for a recommendation.
I would be in favor of just leaving that, that line in there.
Yeah.
Top of the other stuff that we may end up doing.
Is it worth, um, including a comment in here just about this? I think where my conclusion, I guess, on public comment we've received, right, is that, um, a lot of it has. Kind of been more related to the earth removal. So I, I, I mean, no, we're in here and I don't know if this is normal or not, but like, is it worth noting that significant public comment was received? Especially related to concerns about earth removal.
I, I. Don't feel it's needed or appropriate because. Unfortunately, all of the comments that the planning board received that are specifically tied to the earth removal. Those people will need to make those comments directly to the board of appeals. When the applicant, should the applicant file for a special permit. So the comments that the planning board received are not part of the public record for the zoning board of appeals.
Other, other questions, comments about, um, this particular section before we move on? It's a good discussion, good additions. I know we're paying really close attention to making this as accurate and represent, representative as possible, so thank you.
Any, any edits, Linda?
Fine, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the next we get into. Section 620 reservation of land for public purposes. Goes through. Um, and specifically deals with the findings that the board has to make for the reservation of land. Um, for the park.
I had a minor, I think grammatical comment on, um. Page 14, uh, where lot A1 is preferable. Than lot E or F. I think lot A is preferable to a lot E or F or lot E or F. Because it is located on a local street. So just the preferable to lot E or F because it is located on a local street. Take that, Linda.
Excellent comment, thank you.
Um, let me see if there had another one. No, my next one's on page 15. Anybody else? This is, um, this section about the, um. Reservation of land, you know, for public, for public parks, so let's make sure we've captured that correctly. We had good discussion about. Which, um, which lot is preferred, and I think this, um, the findings about why we are recommending these are, are excellent. Thanks for ca- capturing them.
Elizabeth, were you able to look at? Sort of the, the. Volume or the proportion of public space, not including land set aside for affordable housing. To see like, is the one lot A1 a? You know. An adequate reservation for that purpose, given the size of, of the land being discussed.
So I, I was not able to take the, um, calculation that was done, you know, like in, in. How it was done, the community standard, which for currently. Based on the area of land that's protected, it's, you know. Little bit more than 8% of the town. Or permanently protected land that's not federal or state. Um, but from there was not able to go through and, you know. Refine that down to. You know, whether it's. Land that's under an agricultural preservation or whether it's permanently protected just for. A park or whether it's natural resources and it's just permanently protected open space, so. It would take a lot more of a detailed analysis to be able to. Um, establish what a community's standard would be for. Um, a development in the resident C zone district, I think it becomes, um, much more challenging. Um, so the, the short answer is no, and I think it would be a much more challenging. calculation to do for a subdivision in the resident C zone district. Because it's, you, you're not looking at on par with, you know, um, like October Farm, you know.
Right.
Um, so, you know, the comparison is very difficult when you're in a more. Densely developed area than, you know, something, you know, further out in. Um, the larger zone districts, so.
And, and so I'll, I guess I'll put this question to the board more broadly is. If, if we're thinking through sort of, sort of gaming out what the, the process is going to be for. Both this reservation and for the affordable housing reservation. Being put forth to town meeting. And while sort of simultaneously keeping in the back of your mind. Any sort of challenge that may come from the applicant on any of these. Do we think that one, one public space reservation is, is sufficient? Given both the size of of the overall plot of land? And given, you know, our earlier discussion that we've had over several meetings about, you know, an attempt to preserve to the extent possible, natural features. Because, you know, the the affordable housing reservations, I I hundred percent think we should do, but we should also understand that those are in no way a going to be protecting any of the natural features. They will be cleared just as any of the other plots that will be ready for for housing. So if we're if we're thinking of attempting to set aside any land in addition to A one. And I think A one is a good spot for all the reasons that we discussed before for for a public park. But if we wanted to attempt to reserve a space purely for natural features. You know, one, is there an interest in doing that? And two, you know, where where would we would we look to on the on the layout of lots for for which one? So I'll just put that out there, you know, obviously, by stating that I'm in favor of an additional reservation for public public purposes. But I am curious to hear any other thoughts from other board members.
Comments from from the board? Nathan, I I see where you're coming from. And yes, I I can see how it might be conceived that that's not even worth it to just, you know, for the town to purchase just the one lot. It's not even big enough. So perhaps it wouldn't wouldn't be an attractive enough proposal. However, I think that the expense of two lots, you know, would be a pretty significant expense for to be approved at town meeting as well. So I, you know, I that's kind of the the flip side of that. So I I would be a little, I I'd almost be hesitant. Oh, but but also your proposal was perhaps reserving fewer lots for affordable housing, right? Two, instead of three lots for affordable housing and.
When I mentioned that at the last meeting, that was just a discussion as to you know, with the applicant, if they would be willing to to go full electric.
Okay.
Could we work something out with that?
Right. Okay, I was thinking that we were thinking about, right? Perhaps, you know, saying four lots in total, two of which we would reserve for the the public park, and then two of which would be for affordable housing.
And and so the other thing, you know, I've kind of mentioned, is I want to keep this in mind, is that if the applicant challenges one and and David jumped on this, if the applicant challenges one or both of these, they are they are sort of under separate headings. So they could win one, lose the other. And then you're stuck with if they if they win on the the portable housing units or for the affordable housing reservations. Those those are gone. We do. We no longer have those, and we have only the one public space reservation where is if we set aside two for the public's public purpose space. And and they challenged again those those two two sections. And they win the public or the affordable housing reservation, we still have two public spaces to use for park or for just a natural reserve, maybe toward the back of the lot. So I just want to keep that in mind. These are not guaranteed that, you know, we're because I kind of feel like the board is saying, well, we're going to get three affordable units out of this, but that is not necessarily true. And so I want to make sure that we are both bringing forward reservations that that we we want, that and that potentially one or the other is the only ones we are able to bring forward to town meeting in the first place.
Nathan, I'll only comment to add to say that you're correct that either one or both of those provisions, you know, a judge could rule that one is valid and not the other. So you're correct in that understanding. And and likewise, town meeting might prove one, but not the other.
And and to the extent that at this point in time, and it is our belief that that we would not be paying out should we lose if there is a challenge and we lose that, or if town meeting does not approve the lots and we can, we can we can move those lots individually through town meeting instead of two at once or three at once. You know, there there's, in my mind, there's a lot of different ways for this to play out. And I worry that if we if if we go forward with kind of the mindset that, you know, that the current arrangement is in the bag, that that may not pan out as thought and and, you know, it's a missed opportunity.
Okay, I I'd like to hear kind of what some other folks on the board think about this. I think it's a it's a valid point. And it is going to be up to the the voters at town meeting certainly about, you know, what what they want to invest in. And so presenting them attractive options is really important. And certainly, and coming up in the next section is we've got to finalize the lots that we would like to reserve for the affordable housing, inclusionary housing. So what do people think about Nathan's proposal of reserving two lots for public purpose? Burton?
I I just thinking pragmatically about funding sources for things like this. I think there will be funding, other funding mechanisms that are separate for affordable housing within the next three years, funding for this type of of acquisition is, I think, would be it would be really challenging to to you. I think we'd be looking at, you know, acquisition. I mean, I don't know what these lots would sell for, but it probably they have a significant value, I think, unless we can reserve two and buy one if the funding is not there. I would suggest we go for one because I'm very keen to see this this park happen, and I wouldn't want to lose a smaller lot because a large, a smaller park because a larger park is not financially feasible. And that's, you know, that's before even taking into consideration what I presume are going to be some some future funding challenges that the town will be facing, both because of the present COVID situation and the middle school construction. So.
And so Nathan.
I I would say one lot is what I would come down on.
And Nathan, I think that's why you had that question. If we reserved two lots for public purpose, could we just go to town meeting and say, we'd like to authorize, you know, or we we'd like to request funding for this one of two lots, correct? That's why you asked that.
But I think we we brought this up before. We could bring to town meeting, you know, these four lots or five lots as individual items for town meeting. They don't have to be bucketed together. So to to Burton's point, if if the concern is, well, at least in my mind, there isn't a concern that you you wouldn't get A one unless the voters outright said, we don't want to buy A one, which could be the case regardless of of what assortment of you know, reservations we have. So I I guess what I'm having difficulty following is what what is what the argument is against making the additional reservation? Because if the funding is not there, then then, you know, there's not going to be a vote for it. If you know, if the town itself isn't interested in reserving one or both or any of of the four or five lots, then they're going to vote that way. I I just don't see why the board is making the decision for the community on that, when the community can make the decision for us. And there's not, I I what is the consequence, I guess, that that people are seeing in making that additional reservation?
I don't think it's a a consequence of making that that reservation. I think it's a balance of, you know, is it? It is a balance of funding and town meeting is is the the balance for two areas for public purpose for, you know, a park and and, you know, maybe a more un, you know, and one area left the way it is with two lots for affordable housing, or is the, you know, the concern in the community? This one A one park is great for, you know, that little neighborhood, but and and having you know, three lots for affordable housing is 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 that the balance for the community that you know, that the importance of one or the other. And ultimately, I think that's what it will come down to for town meeting besides just the flat truth about funds. It's it's going to be what is the 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 current importance for the community?
Right. And I agree with that. I I just think that at this point in time, we're talking about what might be the case financially and interest of the town within a scope of three years from now. And that could very well change in three years, but we can't go back and make a reservation. So if we reserve the the, you know, we make the reservations now, we have them and the time to make those decisions over the next three years.
Right, I understand, but.
Based on the finances that are in place.
Right.
To make the decision.
Right, but you can you can you can either reserve them for a park or or housing, and you can't and you have to make that decision now. So you can't, you can't reserve two for a park and two for housing. And the town decides, well, we don't want two for a park, we only want one, and then convert the other one to housing. That that.
I'm not, no, I'm sorry. I'm not. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we would, we would identify and reserve the three that we've identified thus far for affordable housing. We would, we would identify and reserve A one for a public purpose. And we would identify and reserve an additional one yet to be named for another public purpose spot. Am I wrong saying that? Bring those individually to town meeting, the lots.
No, you can, you can bring them individually. So, oh, I, so that the I I think there's also the fundamental question of reserving five lots out of sixteen.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is is comply with, you know, in six point twenty reservation of land shall not be unreasonable in relation to the size of the tract being subdivided and to the prospective uses of the reserved land. And I think that's why you asked Nathan about, you know, how do we determine, you know, what's reasonable? And so Elizabeth did kind of that digging so we could understand. And so, you know, agreed, if if we're, you know, reserving land, I I think we do need to be reasonable with our requests. And so a total of four that we're reserving is a is a, you know, decent number to request of the applicant, even though we're within our our right to do that. And so I want to make sure that we're very judicious with our our requests for reservation. And not just, well, because, you know, because we can, you know, we're going to, you know, try to take more than we might need. That's all. It would be great if we had a bigger park. But I I do want to make sure that we're, when we reserve these lots, it's with the reasonable expectation also that, you know, we're going to have wide support from town to make this purchase. We're not just reserving it on the off chance. So, you know, in my mind, that would be the the reason to reserve one for the park rather than two and 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 still the three affordable lots as well. Or, you know, two lots for the park and two for affordable housing. I would rather have, you know, more affordable housing lots if if if, you know, that was my options. But I I would not recommend more reserving more than four lots. Although I I understand what you're saying, Nathan. I think I think you have the the you know, the the best interest of the town at at heart, and I want to make sure we're we're weighing, you know, the all of the sides as well.
Yeah, I mean, the last thing I'll say is I'll just reiterate it. I think, you know, we we should we should very much be aware and and conscious of the fact that the applicant has outright said regarding the affordable reservations that that I I may be remembering incorrectly, so I'm not going to say that they directly said this. I'll take that back, but that they were, you know, would intend to challenge that. So you know, though, if if they win, they're gone, like.
Well, I mean, and we we know that, you know, our our bylaw was duly enacted, you know, it's and so what we just need to proceed with, you know, our our job is the planning board to reserve those lots, you know, regardless of kind of what happens afterwards. But I I think you're you're trying to, you know, do the best we can, you know, in the in the long term. Did Alan, Linda, or Haley, did did any of you have a thought on this? Because it is a good suggestion, Nathan. We do need to nail it down now and then continue to the to the affordable housing because we need to identify there's there's, you know, we've got to decide between two of the lots for the to the third property. So Haley, Linda, Ellen, what do you think about should we reserve one or two lots for the public purpose?
I mean, I think his thought is not a bad one. If I understand it, Burton's concern was if, you know, we get struck down on two lots being for public a public park, does that mean we we could potentially get nothing? But I would think the resolution would be, we only get one, in which case we're back to where we are anyways. Meaning we would still have one, but I I don't know if that's the likely outcome or not. I mean, and if it were to be the likely outcome, then I would support kind of splitting, splitting it up as such to, you know, hedge against litigation on the lot, you know, the affordable lots.
The subdivision control law specifically provides for the reservation of land for for a public purpose like this. I don't think there's any question that this is within our authority under the law to to I set aside land for a public purpose and one purpose being a park. I don't think this this set aside is really subject to significant risk of of challenge. With the exception of, you know, that it be reasonable in the context of the overall size of the tract of the of the track being subdivided. I, so that's not my, and I I don't think we should be thinking about this as, well, we need to get either this or the the affordable affordable housing lots. I think they're separate. And with different considerations on on this, I just think that the appetite for the town to spend money on a park in in West Concord after land acquisition on around, you know, funds that have been expended for Warner Pond. Funds that are being spent in around White Pond. Things like that, that there there, I don't think it is likely that we would see desire to to purchase a significant, you know, two lots. So I, that's why I would suggest one and just cutting to the cutting to the chase and with a pragmatic view.
Linda or Alan, any other questions or comments for discussion?
I I I would say that I feel that the promotion of of one lot is responsive to the community and its concerns about not having access to land that they once had access to. I I think it's sensitive, and I I think it would be adding value to this development. Unfortunately, it's a value that would have to be paid for by the town as opposed to some acknowledgement on the part of the developer that that would have been a great improvement in his plan. But I do think that going to double that, I'm not sure how much more incremental value it would represent to the community versus the resistance it might represent financially to the town overall with with the fact that there, you know, is is right out fairly nearby where larger the need for, you know, larger. um, it, the need for, you know, larger, uh, community spaces is available. So I, I think it's sort of a, a large pocket park, it, it could be really quite, quite attractive with, with the one lot and it could provide opportunities for a dog park or a sculpture park or a kid's playground or some basketball courts. I think it, it could be very, very nice and, um, and to describe that way to the community at town meeting and, and perhaps if we could get a positive result. So I, and, and I think it's also respectful of the fact that the developer, you know, has has some limitations in terms of what the planning board would see as our purview or, or, or right to, to make decisions for them as well.
Thanks, Linda. Um, Ellen, can?
I agree with, I, I don't have much to add to that, actually.
So Nathan, I, I do appreciate the idea. I'm hearing the majority of the planning board members would like to reserve one for the public purpose. Can you live with that?
I mean, one thing that that kind of struck me from what Linda was saying is, is to use it, one, I, I love pocket parks. I think they're, they're an asset to any community that they go into, but to, to hear, you know, the idea to have it used as a, as like a sculpture park or basketball courts or, or something like that, particularly when that sort of open space is available right out and a lot, I mean, a lot of what we've heard from the community, aside from wanting, you know, a park space when we were talking about the PRD, is, is a reservation of the natural features. And such a park would, would go against that very thing. We'd be doing the thing that, that we're sort of denouncing the developer for doing, which is clearing land to make a basketball court or some other such thing. And so this is why I'm saying that I think part of the, the approach is, you know, what we've heard from the, the community, particularly those around, around the development is an interest in, in, in the, you know, the preservation of the existing lands. And as a broader, uh, you know, aspect to what Concord is attempting to do is, is, you know, reserving natural resources and, and things like that. And so I think part of what, what I'm proposing is that we're allowing the town to make the decision that we don't need to make this decision. We.
Right, we certainly don't need to make the decision of what goes there, but.
That, that's true, but somewhat potentially in how we decide where the reservation is based on the applicant would need to prepare the land both for this, the, the right of way and for the individual lots. What determine what, uh, what might happen.
Potential use, sure.
And so, so, all, all I was saying was that, that, you know, basically as, as a planning board, we don't need to make that decision beyond the reservation and the identification of, of the lots. The, the financial aspects and all the other considerations and weighing, again, if we were to do the presentation to town meeting by individual lot as opposed to as, as, as a bucket, allows the town to make those decisions at the time when things we don't know now are known. The finances are not knowable now. We will have a better idea of what those finances are in a year, two years, three years. And, and, and again, the town can make the decision as to what it values for, for that space. I don't, I don't view it as a competition between the affordable units, which I think we definitely need to have in there. And, and public park space. In, in my mind, the, the, as Burton pointed out, there are funding streams that are available to partially offset some of the costs related to the affordable reservations. But when it comes to the public park space, you know, again, we've just been hearing again and again and again, both from board members and from the community is a preservation of, of the land. And I feel like if we don't even attempt to allow for the town to, to have a say on that, we've, we've done, we've, we've lost out on the one thing that we could, we could walk away with and say, hey, at least we saved that parcel. You know, we did what we could and, and the town made the decision to purchase it, or it doesn't, or it doesn't. I just, I don't think we need to make that decision right now beyond selecting the, the, the number and the location.
I, I think that we could, we could certainly make a defensible decision that, that two lots is, is a reasonable amount of, of land to reserve. I think that what I'm hearing from the board is we are trying to err on the side of, of conservative and, and make sure that, you know, we're, we're balancing the needs of, you know, of, of everybody involved within the, you know, the purview of what we have. I, I, I hear what you're saying, Nathan. I, you want to, you know, keep it wild. I, I do hope that, that, you know, all of, all of our, our public does understand that we have heard them and we're, we're doing what we can within the rules and regulations of the subdivision on, on what we can weigh in on. And, and I hope, you know, that's, that's understood. So when we say, well, we're just, you know, we're trying to preserve as much as we can, I, I think it still has to be, you know, within a reasonable amount.
Well, I guess I, I, I would disagree that it's unreasonable.
Right, I think a case could be made that the two lots is reasonable.
I, I, I view six point two zero and six point two one as separate but related. Right? So one is a reservation for one purpose, one is a reservation for a, a very different purpose. They both have benefits to, to the town. But the approach to them and the way to think about them, I think is, is, is different. So, I mean, this is.
We're, we're just trying to operate within the.
A sticking point for me, because this has been really the pushback over this entire development since the very beginning in twenty eighteen, uh, has been about this. And it to, to sort of roll over on the one opportunity we have to give the community the final say on it just doesn't, doesn't sit right with me. We're making.
So for example, when we reserve.
From them.
When we reserve lots for inclusionary housing, you know, it, that six point two twenty one really lays out, you know, this is the minimum area to be reserved and the minimum tract size and things like that. So it's very specific. When we're talking about the part we're talking about, and it just says it can't be an unreasonable amount. Like you said, I, I think that we could most definitely make a case for what is reasonable and, and two lots being reasonable. I mean, what is.
It's important to point out that it is not that this land is being just snatched away from the developer. They.
Sure, it's.
Paid for them.
Yep.
So.
So, um, Kristen, uh, not to, um, it.
We've got to move on.
Yeah, you have to move on, but it, you can easily, you know, just take a poll of each board members and say, you know, you know, one or two.
I, I, I think, I think we have, but you know, let's, let's go through. So Burton, one or two lots. And Ellen, one or two lots, one, Linda, one or two lots, and then Haley. So Haley says two, so we've got about, and I, I would say one, so we've got like four to two, and that's why I was asking, like, Nathan, can you live with this if we stick with the one? I think you, I think you've made a compelling case. I think that, you know, we, in this case, we're going to need to go with the majority. I don't know if this is going to, you know, make a difference in, in, you know, how you weigh on the final vote of the project or not. So, you know, I want to, I, I, I hope that, I hope that you're able to live with this. I, I know that the town will appreciate, you know, what you're fighting for, so. Haley and Nathan, can you live with one lot?
Maybe we may not have a choice. To, I mean, I'll be upfront, your question is, does it, does it make me a no overall? And the answer is.
And I think that will be something the board will discuss at the end when you vote.
Okay.
Okay.
We're, we're now going to move on.
All right. So reserving the affordable housing, the lots for inclusionary housing, we do have to determine which lots. I, I did have a comment on page fifteen where it said, the board, the board further notes that the applicant has not indicated which lots it would prefer, prefer the board to reserve for affordable housing. I would like that to change that to, um, the board further notes that the applicant, and then change this part, declined to state a preference for lots the board should reserve because we asked and they, the applicant specifically declined. So it's not that just they don't have a preference and left it up to us.
One more time, I'm sorry.
That's right, declined to state a preference for lot, for the lots the board should reserve. And that may not even accurately, strongly enough capture it, but the applicant declined to state a preference for which lots it would prefer that the board reserve. So that was just my thought, because I, I, we did discuss it with the applicant. The applicant, we, we understand, you know, what the applicant's attorney believes applies to them or not. Our town council has told us this is a valid bylaw and that, you know, our, our job is to, or as planning board members is to abide by this. And so when given the opportunity to participate in the discussion for the reservation, the applicant declined to do so. True, that's true. We, we did ask if they wanted to do something else.
I just want to check that section.
Um, so our job, while Elizabeth is looking that up, is, did everybody see that we did hear back from, Elizabeth did hear back from, um, the housing.
Housing Development Corporation.
Thank you. And so they had another idea for a lot, and so we need to decide between the suggested lots. So we're, we're reserving a total of three lots. We had discussed, you know, three of them, five, thirteen and sixteen. And another section, one, one recommendation was lot ten, because of the potential for duplex because of the size of the lot. However, I thought we looked at larger lots and, and we thought perhaps that wouldn't work because it was close to the wetlands. Was that what our concern was?
Um, yes, so lot ten and eleven, and I can bring up, lot ten and eleven are, are, are right up against the wetland.
So would that limit development potential in terms of duplex?
It, it does, it.
But at a minimum, there could be a single family house there, just.
At a minimum, yes.
Um, would we be able to?
I would say that like a duplex would.
I'm, I'm sorry, Haley, what?
Oh, I just, I thought I remembered a discussion about how a duplex would kind of stand out in the, with the rest, like, stand out, not in a, in a good way with the rest of the development.
So, uh, a duplex would, it may not, it may not visually stand out because you can, you can design a duplex that just, that looks like a single family dwelling. However, for lot ten and lot eleven in these locations, if you were to design a duplex, what would stand out is, one, you would more than likely, all of these other homes are going to be a single family dwelling with a two car garage. You more than likely would not be able, you would have probably two single car garages. And, you know, everybody would be aware that it is a duplex. And so, yes, there is that element of, you know, while visually, you could make it look like the other homes, um, yes, in, in truth, people would know. So the ones that are, it's lot seven, ten and eleven. And for both of those lots, though, as far as the grading, one, they are right up against the, the wetland. Between ten and eleven is the detention basin. And then on lot seven, between seven and six is, is the other detention basin. So, you are, you would be looking at, you know, a lot that is right up against the wetlands.
What, what do folks think? So what, basically, we, I think there, there was agreement between, you know, the Housing Development Corporation on lots five and sixteen, we're trying to decide between that ten and thirteen?
Uh, five and thirteen. So my, my suggestion was sixteen and the Concord Housing Development Corporation.
Oh, said ten. Okay, so we're deciding between ten and sixteen based on, you know, what Elizabeth just described about the locations. So I, I appreciate the fact that she was thinking about getting an additional unit on there. And we know, you know, what the potential limitations or drawbacks would be. I would be more concerned about the location proximity to the wetlands. So I, I would be inclined to choose the, our originally selected lot. But I'd like to hear what other folks think.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my, so if the thought is that we would not end up putting a duplex or a two family on ten for a variety of reasons, then we would be paying for a, a much larger lot that we wouldn't be able to use in the way that in- intended, that we could use at sixteen for probably a much lower initial cost to purchase that, that lot.
Thanks. Other folks, what do you guys think? Because we, we need to determine the three lots that we're going to put in here and, and move on.
I, I guess I, I am somewhat an advocate of, of lot ten. And, and I just want to know, Elizabeth, are, are you really convinced that there is no way a duplex could go up on that lot?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not convinced at all. But again, I'm, I mean, you, you're, how this lot is shaped, you are very limited in, you know, you wouldn't, you definitely would not be able to have two driveways separated for a development. You would only have one single driveway. It's hard to see, but, you know, the lot is shaped in this manner. The septic system is over here.
I don't see your, I don't see your plan. I'm still looking at your, our, our draft decision.
Oh, um, why is it?
Do you have two screens?
No. Hang on. It says my screen sharing is paused. Oh, thank you, Chris. Let me see. There you go.
Okay.
So. So this is lot ten right here. The lot is shaped in this manner. The septic system is up here. Um, so you would not, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to have, you know, you, you, you would be talking about one driveway. I mean, it's, it's just, it has constraints as far as how, how a duplex would be able to be built on this lot, provide separate entrances. Um, you know, whether, you know, a two car garage and how, how that would be split, given the fact that you only have this limited area for a driveway. And, you know, this limited area for the septic system, I just think it's, it's a, it's a much more challenging site.
Okay. You know, I, I think, my thinking was it would be supportive of the zone, you know, zoning in residence C for duplex. zone, you know, zoning in residence C for duplexes. And but if we couldn't put a duplex, then I, I would agree, it doesn't make sense to pursue that particular lot.
Right. Not saying that we couldn't do it, but it's, it, it would be a, it's probably less like, significantly likely. Is what it sounds like.
I mean, if, if, if the board is, if that's the direction the board wants to go, then I would, I would probably reserve 13, 16 and seven. Seven at least gives you, you know, a different type of layout where you may be able to design a duplex slightly different.
I mean, I'd say if there's a potential for a duplex, like a reasonable potential, then yes, I would, I would vote for that lot. I just don't want to take a lot based on its size if it's very unlikely, like it sounds like 10 is. So if, if seven is a more reasonable shot at that, then, then I, I would prefer that over another lot. And we definitely wanted 13. Other folks, let's weigh in so we can nail this down. Because I don't, I don't, I just set the record for the longest meeting last time, and I was going to tell you how short this one was going to be by comparison. And y'all are making me look bad.
Nothing that involves this being short. I, I'll, I'll just say that, you know, yeah, I think if there's an opportunity to, to, to develop one of the lots into a duplex, then I, I think that's an option we should, you know, we should prioritize over another. And so, yeah, if the, if the trade-off is 16 for seven, then, yeah, I would be, I would be for that.
But just to throw one more option in there.
Why not?
Well, not an option, but one more consideration. The board had talked about reserving five. Because if the town were to purchase it, then they could do another public, I put wide public access easement through here, out to the back. So that was just the other reason for the consideration of five.
And, and I guess this is where I'll throw, my idea for the second patient was, was lot six, because then you, because there's already going to be a catch basin between six and, that is six, right? Yeah, six and seven. You basically have, well, once the retention basin is built, you have an unobstructed pass-through between the, the wetlands on the, on the right and the town land on the left.
Okay, so we have now opened up more options. And we're trying to pin it down to three, narrow it down to three, our final three. I think we definitely agree on 13. What about seven? Are people in favor of seven?
It'd be easier just to have each board member give their three.
Okay. Burton, what's your top three?
Thanks. My top three are 13, 16 and five.
Okay. Alan?
13, five and seven.
Okay. Nathan?
13, five and seven.
Okay. Haley?
Um. Yeah, 13, five. Seven.
And Linda, what are your thoughts, please?
13. 13, seven and five.
Okay. And I can agree with that. So those lots, lots five, seven and 13 are what we're voting on reserving. Any, anything we're missing, Elizabeth, in that recommendation?
The only, the only thing that is missing is the lots are not dispersed within the subdivision. I do not consider five and seven. You know, dispersing within the subdivision.
I think that, that, but we're choosing them for, for other important reasons as well. So if, that's, that, that would be my recommendation. I think that the reasons we're making those recommendations are outweigh the full dispersment. All right. Any, any other comments about that section, inclusionary housing? And then I had a comment on page 16, if you wanted to share your screen again, Elizabeth, with the decision. And Linda, are we capturing, you know, any comments that you've had along the way? Or anyone else? Make sure each page.
Yes, I think so.
If we are on page 16, number four, it says, given the significant level of grading and amount of earth required to be removed from the site. Go ahead.
Oh, so before you move on as, as far as the findings.
Oh, okay.
I will need, we will need to come up with one finding. That one deals with the location of areas to be reserved in relationship to wetland floodplains or other surface water or groundwater resources. So lots five and 13 are not located adjacent to the wetland. Lot seven is adjacent to the wetland, but you know, there's sufficient area within the lot to provide, you know, there's sufficient area for adequate upland for the development of, I guess we can say either a, a single family or duplex unit.
Okay. I, I think it's worth mentioning there that, so it's, it's clear that's why we, we chose that one.
Okay, I will make that change.
Do you want to make that note now?
Oh, sure.
I, I don't want you to lose it, so. Thank you. So on number four, right, right before that. Oh, no, go back up where you were, right where you were. Oh, yeah, there, sorry. Where it says the existing steep topography of these lots is no longer an issue. I would, I would propose that the existing steep topography of these lots is not any greater than with other lots. If, if that sounds accurate, I mean, it, it concerns me to say that the, the, you know, that it's not an issue. The existing steep to five feet, you know, is, is an issue, I believe. But perhaps it's no greater with the lot that we've selected than other lots. With, unless that is not accurate according to the location of the lots we've selected. All right. So if you don't see an issue with it, Elizabeth, I would, you know, and if everybody else is okay, I would leave that. Any other, any other proposed changes or comments in this section? I only had one other minor. I think I had a minor, like grammatical correction on page, a couple of, on page 17. On page 17, where it says, if the applicant plans to reduce the size of the drainage system due to the reduction in pavement width, the CPW Engineering Division recommends that the applicant submit for review and approval revised drainage plans, et cetera. Is that a requirement? Because if they recommend it, it seems to me that the applicant doesn't have to do that. So on that paragraph where you are in the second sentence where it says, the engineering division recommends, should that be the engineering division requires? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And if it's in a condition, you don't even have to put that sentence, but. I don't know why they say recommend.
I think David some, I apologize, somebody had a suggestion to slightly reword this.
Okay.
I don't know. So if I bring up my email, does?
You can stop sharing your screen.
So I the idea is just that they need to submit revised plans if they're producing a pavement width. I think I might suggest saying that the applicant's required to submit revised drainage plans and stormwater drainage calculations for the engineering divisions review and approval prior to the board's endorsement of the different.
Right. Because the condition that you have, I guess, condition. No, that's different than what else. I, I only see related to pavement or condition eight. It says the applicant shall submit to CPW for review and approval revised plans and details showing emergency overflow. And if they, yeah, shall also submit for view. So there's a condition eight. But I, I mean, I, I prefer require versus recommend. And if, if David said that's allowed, then I would, I would do that.
Okay.
Oh, Elizabeth, there should be another the pavement second line there after the applicant is required to submit, revise, submit is missing. Yeah.
And then there's a typo in the last line of that paragraph for endorsement. And then I just had one request for a plural on, I think, letter I under one on that page. Could you say sheets 13 and 14? Sorry. Otherwise, I, that you've captured all of my comments. I wanted to make sure, you know, if there are other specific questions that people had about any of the conditions. Elizabeth, were you going to add the condition at the end? Or just, do you put them in a certain order? The last condition that we talked about.
They go in, they go in a very specific order.
Okay. Have you already put it in?
No.
Okay.
Doing that right.
Okay. So that was.
Yeah, they go in a specific order based on the timing of the condition.
Okay.
So the first conditions are standing conditions. And then it goes in order of how a project would sequentially go.
Elizabeth, one question on the performance guarantee. Does it, do we have to specify what form of performance guarantee that is? Or I don't have the regs open in front of me.
Yeah, the subdivision control law allows the applicant to choose from four different types of performance guarantees.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the page above it, did you already correct the highlighted section you had for the reserved lots? Number, letter C there? Thank you. You'll see Elizabeth left a space for us if we had any other conditions that we did not see captured in the very extensive conditions here. Did any, did the board notice anything that is missing? These conditions are intended to, as we talked about earlier, kind of limit the, the harm as we talked about in section 5.5. I'm not hearing any other comments or changes. So we've gone through the entire document. I mean, we didn't read through every condition together, but Elizabeth, we, I think we addressed the things that you highlighted. Is there anything else that you wanted to bring to our attention?
I had one question on page 24. At the top, E and G, I wasn't sure what the, what the difference was.
Oh, no difference. Thank you.
So having gone through the entire document, having, you know, made the additions and changes that we've made. If there are no further amendments to this decision, I believe we now are ready to take a vote on, or we would need a motion to approve the subdivision. Hold on, do I have that in front of me? I believe that's the case, right? Elizabeth, we would need a motion to approve the subdivision, definitive subdivision?
Yep, so move to approve the definitive subdivision based on the findings and conditions in the board's decision.
So we would need a motion, we'd need a second, and then we would take a vote from everybody present. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. That. The board approved the definitive subdivision plan application of Sims Development and Permitting LLC for the subdivision of land at 11B, 146B and 1442 Main Street and 110 Highland Street. Parcels 2407, 2408, 2409, 2409 dash one. And the conditions and.
Findings.
Findings. Thank you. As included in. The decision on definitive subdivision plan and certificate of approval.
Perfect.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Okay.
Any other final discussion before we vote? Okay, I'm going to go around. Everybody give, give me your vote. And Elizabeth, are the options a yes vote? Or a no vote or a yes vote and an abstain vote? What's the, or David, what's the protocol typically?
He could abstain as well.
So it's yes, no, or abstain?
Right.
Okay. All right, Alan.
No.
Burton.
Yes.
Nathan? Oh, I'm sorry. We should, would you like me to start over with last names? Nathan?
No.
Haley?
No.
Linda?
Yes.
And this is Kristen Ferguson. I'm a yes. So that is three yeses and three noes, and we have one member who is not present. David, I'm not sure what to do in this case.
So a majority is required to approve. So this vote operates as a denial.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, thank you for recording the draft decision. Thank you to the board for thoroughly, you know, going through this decision as well as participating fully in the discussion. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Well, I, my, there's, there's other things that have to happen now if David wants to go through them.
Great. Go ahead, David.
Well, you're not sure I'm following you, Elizabeth. Go ahead.
So a decision has to be filed. I don't believe it's this decision.
Right.
Okay.
The decision that the board's been working on is really in support of a the findings are more geared towards an approval.
Got it.
So. Findings would need to be reworked. For a denial. I don't, is Kate? She's just absent tonight?
Yeah, it was a family emergency. I do not believe she is reachable.
Any other? The other option, she's been at all the hearings, all the meetings thus far in this matter. So.
That's correct. Yes.
You could have a special meeting. To, so that she could vote on the matter and revoke at that time.
Which will be a bit of a challenge in the next holiday week.
Correct. When's the decision due?
It's the 30th.
30th. Yeah, so that's Thursday next week. So to. The 30th is Wednesday. We need to have a, you need to post notice for that meeting by Monday evening here to meet on Wednesday next week.
More than likely, it would be have them meet on Tuesday, so the decision could be filed on Wednesday.
If we did notice on Monday, is that enough notice for a Tuesday night meeting?
We can, we can notice a meeting. We can. We can notice a meeting tomorrow. That's not an issue.
Would, would we have a quorum on Tuesday? Next week?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. If you end up having another vote that doesn't involve the people that were.
Yeah, if you could also extend the hearing. As they have in the past.
Well, so the meeting does not have to be at 7:00 PM. The meeting can be whenever all seven members of the board are available.
Okay.
Also a question, you know, once Kate comes and makes a decision based on what's written there, and assuming she watches any of, any of this discussion.
You need to watch it all. Yeah.
That is a are, are changes to the decision as it's written now still, can they still be made after this point now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until the yeah, there's a final vote and a decision filed. Work.
Okay.
Okay, so to proceed, we would need to identify another meeting time next Tuesday that everybody could, everybody could be there.
Or, or Monday. It doesn't.
Monday or Tuesday. Okay.
Discussion tonight. You know, I don't know if members would change their votes based on different changes to the decision. Suggestion.
What do you mean?
I mean, if there are members who, if this, if there are members who voted no, who would vote yes, if there are changes to this.
Okay. And we would discuss that at the next meeting.
I, well, we could discuss.
If they change it to a majority. I'll jump out. I'll say, I think he's alluding to the fact that I mentioned the reservations is the part that makes me a no. I can't get past that. And be a yes. So in order to switch me to a yes, there, there needs to be the second reservation.
Okay. So, um. So is the, is the potential at this meeting to make a change to the decision and take another vote?
Correct.
Okay. Or, or.
So that being the case, it's, I feel it's always my job to throw out the options for the board. So to Nathan's point. And thinking about the lots that the board decided to preserve for affordable housing. The board could reserve lot A1 and lot five for a park and keep lot seven, which would be allow for a duplex and lot 16. For another affordable housing lot. So you would ultimately end up with the same. You would have three affordable housing units and two lots for public purpose. Reserving four lots in total.
Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm hearing that, that one option is to come to agreement to make this change to the decision and take another vote and see if that changes. If we are, if there is still a tie, or if there's still, I shouldn't say tie, if there's still not a majority to approve, then we would, another option would be to have, hold a special meeting next week with all seven members, in which case there would be apt to, you know, we would. We would have some sort of definitive response. And then the third issue is to is to change the decision to a denial. Because it was not voted to be approved. And okay, and Nathan, you are willing to consider your vote if we were to have reserve two lots for the public purpose for, and a total of five lots. Okay, and then we also have to consider whether that's going to make anyone else change their votes in the other way, but potentially not. Any discussion from the board about potential ways forward? Based on what we've done so far, where we've come from and kind of what those options are.
Elizabeth, can you just run through the ones that you, you mentioned quickly?
Oh, not 16. So A1 for a park. 13 for affordable housing, seven for affordable housing for a duplex and lot five for a park.
But Nathan, would that, would that satisfy kind of what you were thinking? Were you thinking about a contiguous space?
I was, I was not thinking of a, well, I can't speak. I was not thinking of a contiguous space. I was actually thinking that you know, based on the realities of the grading and, and the road, the laying of the road and utilities. I, you know, if the, if the purpose in my mind is to, to attempt to preserve the land to the extent that we can, I don't know if five ends up
Five.
meeting that criteria.
So five is right here.
Okay, so there's just, there's only a little bit of grading that cuts in on, on the corners then. Okay. And anyway, so the, the reason I was saying that was because, as I mentioned earlier, I was thinking six, because then you have a oh, maybe this is what you meant, Kristen, that you then have a contiguous line between the wetland and the town land on the other side.
No, I didn't know if you wanted, you know, like a larger open space altogether.
No, 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 that's not that. Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't my intention. One was to, you know, like I said, I, I like the idea of a, of a pocket park to be used in some way. And I think A1 is, is extremely suitable for that. And that
Six is.
Makes the most sense for it's going to be disturbed for the retention basin on the one side, but, but after that is completed and it's sort of group, like some growth naturally comes back into that retention basin. There's an allowance for you know, movement across the back of the lot there.
Six is, six is fine as well. So this is where six is.
And it seems to me that's also one of the least likely to be otherwise disturbed in the whole process of developing the, the overall land.
Correct.
Okay. Kristen, didn't you just say five blocks or Nathan, you're okay swapping a affordable for a
So I don't, like, like I said at the beginning, I don't view them as, as, as trade offs. I view them as separate.
I think it's a total of five.
Reservations and separate approaches. So, so I would still, I would be with five. You'd have two for the
Right.
Public purpose and for.
So I think, yeah, that would put us at lots, maybe lots seven, 13 and 16 for affordable. Is that where we would end up? Because that's you know, 16 was what we wanted before, and then lots A1 and six.
Yeah, that makes sense to me because, because the whole reason we were reserving five was to have a path through the town land, which we no longer would need if we're already reserving six.
So seven, 13 and 16 for affordable housing. A1 and six for town land.
So a total of five lots?
I think that's what I'm, I'm hearing. You know, that's what Nathan had said. Questions, discussions about this, this is kind of the only, are there other proposed changes to the decision that would make people vote differently? All right, I'm seeing, I'm seeing no other suggestions. So would we go through and make all those changes, David, and then take another vote? I mean, it's not a lot of change. Should it be changes to the, the sections where we have those lot numbers?
Or can we take a straw poll to make sure it doesn't change in a great, the other direction? And then we did all the work for no reason.
I'm wondering. How do we go about this?
I would suggest a straw vote and also until the decision is filed and we could amend the language. So I don't, I don't think we need to work it all out.
Okay.
The changes that we've discussed are
Okay.
changing the numbers. So pretty straightforward.
Okay. And so I'm going to go around and ask everybody if this, this proposed change to the decision where we would be reserving an additional, reserving an additional lot for public purpose. Would this change your vote? Alan?
No, go and change my vote.
And Burton, would it change your vote?
No, which means I stay a yes.
Okay. Nathan, would it change your vote?
Yes, it would turn it into a yes.
Okay, and Haley, would this change your vote?
No.
Okay, which would say now Linda, would this change your vote from yes to no?
Double negative. No, it would not. It would not change my vote, which is a yes.
And I wouldn't change my vote. So if we were to take another vote at this meeting with this these board members, it seems like we would have four yeses and then approval based on the decision as amended. So. So do I take another official vote?
I would entertain a motion.
Okay. And so would the motion be to take, just, you know, to approve the decision as amended? So just, okay, so we would look for another motion?
This by as amended with the numbers on the appropriate lots. Affordable and public purpose.
I want to ask you a question.
Yes, Alan.
So if the decision is yes. It's not voting, we don't have a, we won't have the additional number of the
Can you say that again? I always have trouble hearing you.
If the, if the, if the, the majority here is yes, we won't have we will not, we're having Kate vote on this, correct?
I, that's correct, because there, oh, I think we need four of seven to approve.
Four of seven, right, okay.
That's right.
Is there a motion to? Is there a motion to approve as amended here?
Linda, do you have the language in front of you?
I I would like to make a motion that the board approved as amended the definitive subdivision plan application of Sims Development and Permitting LLC for the subdivision of land at 11B, 146B and 1442 Main Street. and 110 Highland Street, parcels 2407, 2408, 2409, 2409 dash one. With the amendments to note that lots thirteen, seven, and sixteen would be reserved for affordable housing, and lots A1 and six would be reserved for public open space. According to the definitive subdivision plan and certificate of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so let's go around. Alan?
My vote is no.
Burton?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Haley?
No.
Linda?
Yes.
And this is Kristen. Yes. So that is the subdivision has been approved. Pending all the conditions, so anything else you need on this one, Elizabeth? All right. Well, thank you to everyone who deliberated and I'm sure we will follow what happens in the ZBA, and we're certainly glad to provide any recommendations that are requested. So moving on to other topics, if Gary Kleiman is still on the line and would like to give us an update about the NMI StarMet reuse planning committee, we are certainly welcome to hear what the group has been working on. I know that you have that, that very comprehensive report come out. Oh, hold on.
I would just like to say thank you to David.
No.
The board needs him any longer.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much, David.
Enjoy the holidays. Nice, nice.
And everyone, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
All right. Hi, Gary. It's nice to see you.
Hello, how are you? Thanks for having me. So I'll keep it quick because I know we're running late. I've been there and appreciate how late it is right now and that you all want to go home. So really, this was just a heads up. I believe Elizabeth included in your packet two documents. One is a link to a report, I don't know, something like thirty or forty pages. That is our preliminary draft report. It is not a, a final draft. It is a preliminary report that we're sharing with some of our key committees. Because we want to make sure that what we have put together in terms of responding to our charge to the select board to review options for the Nuclear Metals Inc. StarMet Superfund Site, its development are basically aligned with what other key committees and town boards are thinking about. So the planning board is one of those. We consulted you early, we're consulting you again. Have, have at it, read it. There's also a PowerPoint presentation that summarizes some of the key things in there. Not so much the findings of the report, but, you know, things for you to think about. And the difference between the update I gave you, I don't know, nine months ago, ten months ago, a year ago, and now is we've actually deliberated over all of these issues, and the committee has come up with a few recommendations. So in the PowerPoint, you'll see some of those key recommendations, or you can just jump to chapter five of the report. And there's about a two-page summary of what are the key findings that we're basically going to lay out for the select board to consider, including we're recommending officially that they take ownership of the parcel. And other things that they could be doing in the near term as well as longer term. So read the report, love to hear your feedback. If you can give us any feedback by our next meeting, January eighth, that's great. We'll try and incorporate it in the pre-final draft so that, you know, after January eighth, we'll be finalizing a, what I'll call a final draft report that would go for public review. If you don't have time to read it before January eighth, that's fine. Also, the planning board can come and, you know, in parallel with the rest of the public. We just wanted to give you this sort of sneak preview. So there's an opportunity in case you see any red flags and can let us know. But otherwise, yeah, January eighth, we'll be finalizing the, you know, discussing it as a committee and any input that we get before then, finalizing it, and then we'll go out for a broad public review for the entire town to read and comment on. We're hoping that we can have a comment period over January and sort of get comments back by February, where we'll be finalizing it to deliver to the select board sometime in March. So I'll shut up. Any questions you have? Otherwise, enjoy, happy reading.
Um, you know, I noticed that, that in the slides especially, it kind of talks about the, the timeline. And so just to remind people who are listening about the, the timeline of the project, I mean, you guys are, you're thinking ahead because it takes a while to do the remediation and then whatever else we do to it. So remind people about the project timeline once, once it's decided what to do.
Absolutely. This was declared a superfund site back in 2001. And to some extent, the cleanup sort of began right away. So it's been, there are various stages of cleanup that have happened over the past decade and two, or two. There are some treatment systems that are already in operation, but what is about to begin over the next, I would estimate at three to four years, maybe, maybe it can be done in three years because they already have designed the remediation, but they will be carrying out the, the full remediation. So the cleanup will happen over the next three years. And what we're really discussing in this report is what would come three or four years hence, after the site is cleaned up and restored to a residential standard, which means, you know, clean enough to support people living, working, breathing, you know, eating vegetables grown in the soil there, you know, for seventy years, for a full lifetime. It's clean enough that there will be no, you know, additional risk. Only, you know, nec- beyond negligible additional risk for living on the site. So that would be done three or four years from now. And at that point, the question is what would happen with the site? By knowing now what we, or whoever takes ownership of the parcel plans to do with it, they can build that into the cleanup process, and actually it could be a significant advantage to the town. Save a lot of money if you have it, you know, the cleanup structured to support redevelopment.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. I feel like when I skimmed the, the report, that a lot isn't going to be in the hands of the select board. And I was kind of looking into what the input from the planning board that, you know, you're looking for. You know, in addition to, you know, our, our view on things based on our role from the long-range plan. But one of the things you also mentioned was so, some sort of a, the select board member meeting quarterly or so with representative of the planning board, recreation commission, natural resources, you know, like kind of a, like a new, tell, tell us what you're envisioning for, for that, because that, that's the part that I saw the planning board might be involved in.
Right. Well, so there's a couple of options that we lay out for the select board as a recommendation. Basically, the recommendation is the select board needs to decide how to continue planning moving forward. We provided them with this initial report, but, you know, the cleanup begins and will be carried out over the next three years. The town needs to continue planning during that timeframe. And what we laid out is, you know, basically we see two paths to that. They could, you know, recharge the same committee. Our committee with the same members or different members could continue operating in the same mode we have been, or there's an option for the select board to take a more active role with one select board liaison working directly with a liaison from the planning board, a liaison from the natural resources, the finance committee, the recreation department, you know, we could form a, if you will, a committee of committee members that could implement planning for this site directly within the proper committee structure, rather than form a new committee or, I guess, continue the charge of this separate committee, which was, I mean, we were essentially supposed to be a task force. We were, you know, just a quick hit. Do an eighteen-month study, deliver our report, and disband. So at the risk of forming another permanent committee, we're providing an option, which is, look, you know, if you have planning issues, the planning board should be taking those on. If you have finance committee issues, the finance committee should be taking those on. And, you know, maybe once every quarter, you know, the, the select board liaison member could meet with that group. So that's an option that we're laying out for the select board to consider, but what they'll decide to do, I think, you know, the committee has different opinions, and we haven't, you know, said you have to do one or the other, just saying these are two options.
Okay. Questions from board members? I know they've worked hard. Yes, Linda?
I apologize, I haven't read the document, so I don't know if you've considered this or not, but I just wondered, have you considered any specific zoning that you, that you desire, or any zoning considerations that we should start thinking about now for for your plans? And I'm, I'm thinking of what we keep hearing is people don't want mansionization if there's housing development. So would this be something where you could have, I keep pushing this, like neighborhood districts where you don't need to get buy-in from all the residents because there are no residents now, but if you had some of these areas being neighborhood districts a priori, then maybe you could keep some small houses in Concord. Just think, you know, how should we be thinking about zoning going forward on this?
Yeah, there definitely would be a range, a wide range of zoning options available for this site. You know, I believe Elizabeth can correct me. I think right now it's zoned as industrial, is that right? It's part of the industrial district, or is it?
It's, it's limited industrial park with a residential component.
Right, limited industrial, but the zoning definitely could change by vote of town meeting. And, you know, for the town to even take ownership of this parcel, it's likely some form of town meeting vote would be required anyway, but that again is probably three or four years in the future. So I think the next stage is really to, what we have done in this report, and no apologies for not having read the report, we're just sharing it with you for the first time tonight. So as you look through it, you will notice we tried to present a range of options. And so I think the next thing is for the select board and various committees to get further public input and try and narrow down the range of options to a preferred option. And once we have a preferred option in mind, and there's some clarity as to whether, whether or not, in fact, the town wants to take ownership. Our committee is recommending that, but the town probably would want to weigh in. And then, you know, if we do want to and we have a preferred option, you will see, you know, among the options that are laid out in the report, you know, a, a tiny, a tiny house village would be one option. You know, a mixed-use development would probably require some sort of special overlay zoning district. There are some that are focused more on commercial uses, so like an office park type use. Given that it's limited industrial, I'm not sure, you know, with residential component, I'm not sure that you would necessarily need to change the zoning. But one of the recommendations that we include is to consider a sustainability overlay district, much like they did at the Devens Development. In Fort Devens, they included special sustainability features. So creating a special overlay district would require the planning board to sponsor that, you know, a town meeting vote, all of that. So those are all options and things that, you know, the planning board should be weighing in on and considering over the next three to four years. But probably in concert with the select board, the finance committee, and other key committees to, you know, narrow down the options, like we said.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for, thanks for your report on that. Have you guys really already worked on it for eighteen months?
Let's see, who's counting? Yeah, it was June of twenty nineteen. Marcia, you must have the calendar.
Wow.
Yes, yes, you're right.
That's really something. So thank you. I mean, that's, that's, a lot of work has gone into that so far. So I know you don't want to see that, that stop abruptly.
No, it was actually a challenge to keep going through COVID, but I give a lot of credit to my committee members who kept doing a lot of this work all on their own for their individual sections. So, yeah, read it with recognizing that a lot of Concordians put time into making sure it came together despite the challenges of COVID.
All right. Well, thanks, Gary. And I imagine we'll, we'll be seeing you again. So I appreciate you coming by, so.
So maybe in January.
Perfect. All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have one more item on the agenda, and I hesitate to, to go too late because I know everybody is really, really exhausted from, you know, tough, tough deliberations. We did have a good meeting with the ZBA last week where we were talking about potential potential zoning bylaw changes. I, I, this is not going to be the only time we're going to talk about this. I want to talk about this when we're much fresher than now. But perhaps maybe we could just summarize kind of the high-level things of, of what we talked about, so that, you know, folks can be thinking about it. And then let's, Elizabeth, if that's okay, get it on the agenda in the future. And then also, speaking of the agenda and the, and the calendar, on, on the town website, Elizabeth has, where we have, maintain our calendar, and, you know, next year, we've got a new calendar year coming up with, you know, so you can see all the planning board meeting dates for the year. Elizabeth is trying to capture tentative items so we can kind of see what's coming up. So that, you know, hopefully we can, you know, make sure that we meet all of our deadlines for any warrant articles and things like that, but and, and kind of spread out any items that we, we need to, so we hopefully don't have too many marathon sessions. But anyone that was on the call, which I think was Linda and Haley and me, Alan, were you able, I don't think you were able to be on the ZBA call. So Linda or Haley, would you like to, you know, highlight one of the things that we talked about with the ZBA so that we can kind of get people thinking about?
Well, Kristen, I don't think, you know, I gave the update on what, you know, potential bylaws that I'm working on and getting input from. There was, is the floodplain update that has to happen, moving forward with the two family and residency. I'm still waiting to speak with the Public Works on the groundwater conservancy district bylaw. And then I was gonna chat, I think, a little bit more with Haley on the earth, updating the earth removal bylaw to include earth removal and fill, which is similar to many other communities in Massachusetts. And then they also talked about clarifying the section in the PRD regarding the density bonus. And I think since Nathan, Burton, and Alan weren't there, you know, to be able to watch the, the Zoom meeting for the joint meeting. So on your next agenda, I was going to, before that meeting, pull up the, get the minutes from when the board talked about the density bonus and A, B, or C. So you don't need to talk about that now because I'll get you the past information. But then the rest of the meeting was predominantly the discussion with the Board of Appeals about the effectiveness of the floor area ratio bylaw, as well as their, under their jurisdiction, as far as special permits that also come under section seven point one point five, which is the extension reconstruction alteration of a non-conforming structure, which the Board of Appeals is required to issue a special permit if somebody wants to expand a non-conforming structure by more than fifty percent. So I think it was good for the planning board to hear from, you know, the Board of Appeal side, how they go about evaluating those applications under seven one five. As far as the floor area ratio, As far as the floor area ratio, um, I think the Board of Appeals provided the same information. I think there's only been, there's only been, you know, less than five applications that have come before them to go over the floor area ratio. And it, um, the three that I can think of, one was a dormer, one was a, a bump-out window, bow window. And I can't remember the, the couple others, but.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, we, we spent about an hour talking about large houses and, you know, what, what we could do to limit overly large houses. And we didn't necessarily get to all of the underlying causes or, you know, what's our real goal? I mean, our real goal is increasing housing diversity and affordable housing and based on terms of square footage. And so, you know, if you look at strictly at the numbers of the FAR, you can build very large houses on pretty much, you know, any lot. So that doesn't necessarily limit housing size. And so then the other part that we talked about was the, you know, the expansion greater than 50%. And then there's, you know, all these other factors that came into play. So, you know, what I took away from that was, you know, limiting, limiting housing size, limiting mansionization is not a problem that we are going to be able to propose a resolution, one resolution to at this year's town meeting. But I think it is one that, um, we want to investigate further and really say, you know, what are our goals in terms of housing and, and what zoning bylaws and other mechanisms are contributing to, you know, moving us in the direction of those goals, or at least not, you know, preventing us from, from reaching those goals. And so, you know, I think that's going to involve, you know, working with the Affordable Housing Committee and kind of, you know, taking a more holistic, uh, uh, look at, you know, what we're doing. But, you know, if we were to just say, well, let's look at, you know, the FAR bylaw and see if we change some numbers, if that's going to make things, you know, we can, we can evaluate that, but probably not with actual data and time to, to propose something for this year's. But I, I think Kate McNeely had an interest in that, so she might kind of pursue some, some data and, and look at that. Haley was interested in, you know, as I said, um, the earth removal bylaw. And, um, you know, so we've got some, some digging to do to get some more information so we can make evidence-based decisions. One thing that was mentioned that, that the ZBA did say that, that, you know, we could or, or, you know, want to look into is that, the, the criteria by which they evaluate, and I have to kind of pull it up. I, I think it's the criteria by which they evaluate the, um, expansions larger than 50%. Are a little bit vague. And so it makes it harder to make those evaluations, I think, was one thing I heard. And the other thing I heard was when we're looking at floor area, that's very different than overall volume of the house. So, you know, a lot of the houses that are being built now have much larger ceilings. So you've got this, you know, very large home being presented next to another one that might have a similar floor area, but doesn't have nearly the same ceiling. So the, the, the volume that is taken up is, is much different visually. Because obviously we don't say anything about volume. So those were a couple of things that I heard, but Linda and Haley, if you have anything to add, feel free.
I think that was a great summary.
Otherwise, I would, um, so Alan and Burton and Nathan, did you have any specific comments about if we heard something from the ZBA or, or, or issues that we might want to follow up on and find out more information about?
No, not for this evening. Thanks.
All right. And then I would open it up to public comment. If people are still on the line, if you would like to make a comment, you can use the raise hand function and we will unmute you and you can state your name and address for the record. Otherwise, I think that's, um, I think that's everything on our agenda. Is that correct? I am not seeing any hands up. Let me give people another minute just in case. Our next meeting is
January 12th.
January 12th. And on that meeting will be, right now, Pittsburgh-Turnpike subdivision. And what's the 7 o'clock item, if that's the 7:30?
Um, so that's Kate Hanley, the Sustainability Director, and Gary Kleiman will be coming back talking about sustainability initiatives and what the planning board, bringing the planning board up to speed on what those initiatives are.
Terrific. All right. Any other comments from the board? I'm seeing no public comment. All right. Well, I hope everyone enjoys a, a nice holiday break. Elizabeth, thank you very much for all of the work that you have been doing. And, um, I hope you get a little bit of a break too. So we will see everyone in January and we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:59.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.
You too. Good night.